We've talked about it, but.
Redkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bruce Kaelin. Whoever else you have with you.
Kevin, are you with me today?
Yeah.
Good, I thought you were delivering all kinds of problems.
Yeah.
Different disease.
You see, yeah, the dark cloud coming behind Kevin.
Whereas Rotary founded in February 23rd, 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, is the world's largest and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations with more than 1.2 million Rotary Club members in 35,000 clubs around the world. Whereas Rotary International Model is service above self, inspires members to provide humanitarian service and encourage high ethical standards to promote goodwill and peace in the world. And in 1985 Rotary International launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative to immunize the children of the world against polio. And thus far, polio cases have dropped 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. Whereas today Rotary has contributed more than $2.1 billion in countless volunteer hours to protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas Rotary Club of Sioux City has been sponsoring service projects to address the critical issues of poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy in the environment in our community for 108 years. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I will be behalf of the city council, will hereby proclaim October 24th, 2020 as World Polio Day in Sioux City. And encourage all citizens, join me and Rotary International to fight for a polio-free world. Here you go, say a few words if you'd like now.
Well, thank you. Rotary, as you know, is a service club, and we have a very active club in Sioux City. We meet weekly. We have great speakers such as our honorable mayor last week. And you started to mention some statistics. I'm current president of Rotary. Kevin Green is vice president, and he has just a few additional statistics that we think is really amazing in regard to what Rotary International has done with polio, Polio Plus.
It's somewhat excitement I be here today to announce and to talk about the issue of polio that faced our community a number of years ago. As Mayor Scott had mentioned, 19 million children have been saved from ruined lives of paralysis related to this. But the real excitement is the focused effort that went into preventing this disease on a worldwide effort. There was a vaccine that was developed. History shows that this vaccine was actually tested right here in Sioux City. Through our hospitals and that, we have records of some of the work that was done. And we actually had a nursing student that did research and interview some of the local individuals that were alive and that have survived that disease. In addition to that, looking at the hundreds of thousands of adults who don't have that post-polio syndrome. So I think today's excitement, not only with the national world, the observation of polio and the reduction of impact that we've had, it's kind of the exciting time of saying, we can do this. So I hope we move forward in the same thing with the COVID initiative also. But thank you today for the proclamation and recognizing this significant achievement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Robinson, you're on. We have a commendation that reads, whereas Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church has been a picture of Sioux City since the 1900, since 1900. And whereas from the original 11 charter members who met in the former Sioux City auditorium to now the now hundreds who worship at the new church on Geneva Street, Mount Zion has grown with our city and helped guide our citizens spiritually.
I think there's no.
And whereas their minimum mission is to promote the message that Jesus is active in the world today and his presence is manifest in every believer in our conduct, conversation, and choices. And whereas Mount Zion Missionary Baptist is now celebrating 120 blessed years in our community, and we're very excited for the future of Mount Zion. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, I will be on behalf of the city council, demon and honor to commend and congratulate Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church on the occasion of their 120th year anniversary and for the years of service to the Sioux City community. We look forward to Mount Zion's continued success and presence in our city. We'd like to present this to you and thank you for all you do for the community.
I think if you started the auditorium back then, it's probably one of the bullies are trying to do over here.
Just on behalf of the congregation, we just want to thank Mayor and the council for this commendation, and it's a pleasure and a privilege to serve in our great city. And even with all this going on, it's just grateful that we're able to still spread the message of the gospel and love into the community. And so we look forward to many, many more years in this community. So we just thank you again for this commendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to items two through 10E. They constitute a consent agenda. They'll pass unanimously unless a separate roll call is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda, please come up as I read it, state your name and address so it can be recorded. Also, limit your remarks to three minutes. And lastly, if you want to come up on an item not on the agenda, please come up under citizen concerns. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Two is a reading of the October 12th city council minutes. Three is a resolution authorizing a surface transportation block grant with IDOT for the South Fairmont Street Reconstruction Project. Five is a resolution approving amendment number four to the contract with ASME representing the patch union to provide a one-year extension and cost of living adjustment. Five are actions relating to bonds. Items five A and five B are resolutions directing the sale of field refunding capital loan notes, series 2020C and 2020D. Items five G are resolutions direct sale of bonds, series 2011A, 2012A, taxable 2012B, 2015A, and 2015B. Excellent interest rates on these, unbelievable, quite frankly. Actions relating to agreements and contracts. Resolution approving an intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement with DHS for ground emergency medical transport funding. B is a resolution approving a renewal option one with Hawkins for phosphate F-35 solution. C is a resolution approving a second amendment to the development agreement and substitute promissory note with Lam Arts. D is a resolution approving amendment number two to the standard consultant agreement with HR Green for the riverfront trail construction connection project. E is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to Midstates Audio and Video for installation of equipment at the convention center.
I had a question about that. And I don't know if Mike or Bob. I don't see Jessica. Who do we got, Jess? I'm sorry, I should have sent you an email. It's just probably, hopefully, a quick question. It was just about why we were having so much trouble securing bids for this project. Have you thought it was timing? Or it just seemed like we put it out and then they weren't returning, and then we only get one? I mean, are you worried about that in the future? Should we be worried?
Because we named the equipment, and that only one vendor can, once you lock in on that, you're going to be stuck with that vendor forever.
And that's what I wondered if, I don't know how we could ever get away, or what your thoughts were, I guess.
Jessica Johnson in the city manager's office. We, this is actually the second time we bid it out. We bid it out once before in actually 2019 because it was an FY20 CIP project. And we only received one bid back then. And we had the same concerns as you, so we thought maybe it could be a timing, like the ADA thought it could be. So we waited, and then we bid it again, and same result. And this is just because we want the equipment to sync with all the other equipment in the facility. Otherwise, it's a much larger project. We have to replace everything.
Yeah. I totally agree that I want it to sync, and I know that it's that. I just worry that, yeah, at some point in time, it's like, we'll have to, I suppose we wait until we have to redo everything. And then once you redo everything, you reassess whether you liked what you had or you go a different direction, but. Okay. I just wanted, yeah, to make sure and see your thoughts on it. Okay, thanks.
Purchasing A is a resolution awarding a purchase order to TBS Electronic for the Motorola portable radio system at the Tyson Event Center and Orpheum Theater. B is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to TBS Electronic for installation of a portable radio system.
Is it appropriate that I speak now, or?
Yeah, if it's on this item.
These last two items. My name is Bob Kane. I live in Dakota City.
I need an address in Dakota City, please.
424 South 19th Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My wife and I, I've got a short statement here I'd like to read.
Okay.
My wife and I have owned and operated Tri-State Communications in South Sioux City for over 35 years. We own property in Sioux City, and my son that works with us owns his home and lives in Sioux City. We are invested in Sulin. The bid request for the radios for the event center was originally made without regard to equipment brand. After results were reviewed, a change was made to specify brand of equipment and the project was rebid. We understand the situation surrounding the requested radios for the event center. Our products have not been in use with the event center in the past. There's no track record. Familiar products present a real peace of mind to the end users. Your contract management company would understandably be nervous to step outside their comfort zone. That said, our history and longevity of nearly 40 years in this business should lend credibility to both our products and our capabilities. Ultimately, competitive bids are received, and ours was roughly $200 above the low bid from Kansas on a $50,000 project. This is a relatively small project to come before the council. From our perspective, it's a nice piece of business for Tri-State Communications. We just ask that fair consideration be given to our bid as our track record in this business, along with our proximity, should speak clearly to our ability to provide what is asked.
What equipment are you furnishing?
Yeah. Our brand is Kenwood Communications.
Good stuff.
We've done it a long time. We've provided essentially a carbon copy of this system to a new company in South Sioux, Ingredian, that you've probably heard of. We've been down this road. We know this product. And I'd like to have consideration accordingly.
But did you bid this deal? Because I didn't remember the bids being that close.
Well, it sounds like they originally put it out and then they specified the brand later that they wanted Motorola. Is that right?
Fords and Chevys, and it came out, the guy wants a Ford, I guess. I don't really know.
But the Kenwood or the Motorola will integrate with the system that we already have now?
There isn't any integration.
Oh, there's no integration, replacing it. Okay, okay.
What's the deal, Spiro? What's the problem here that I'm missing?
Spiro, this purchasing manager. Initially, the project was bid out without a manufacturer on the specs. Spectra notified us afterwards that it needed to be a Motorola. So it was rebid as Motorola.
Hold on, I missed that. What was the part of needing Motorola? They just asked, or familiarity with it?
Right. So it was bid out specifying a Motorola, which is why Mr. Kane's Kenwood was not accepted.
Okay.
Why, I'm sorry, we're looking at the bid, what?
It was familiarity with the brand Motorola of what they've done before.
Then you get into the exact same thing you're getting into now. You can't ever leave once you get it.
No, I think he was just saying that was why. I mean, it wasn't.
But that's not what we ought to do as a city.
He was stating it was a preference of Spectra.
This is Tim's.
Was his number exposed to the other people? Was his $51,201 exposed before you rebid it?
No, it was not.
You sure it was not? What's wrong with the Kenwood, Tim?
So we failed to identify specifically in the original bid. And so what happened is when we got a handful of bids back, they were all over the board, and it didn't give us a fair opportunity to really analyze the bids. So we redid it with Motorola because we carry Motorola's at the Orpheum as part of our operation. And it was meant to kind of bring all the equipment kind of as similarity, uniformity, if you will. So that's why we put Motorola on there.
We should have done that from the very beginning so that then he doesn't feel like he got treated unfairly.
We recognize that. It wasn't the only one that.
Recognizing it doesn't make.
Well, and that's what he said, is that's why they did it, and they realized they didn't specify brand. They wanted to keep it the same as the Orpheum, so then they specified.
You shouldn't specify a brand. You limit the number of bidders when you specify a brand. You should specify a spec. I was just going to say the same thing. If you identify the specs required for your purchase, and they meet the specs, how did it get so confusing, I guess, Tim? It came all over the board is what you said. Without identifying.
Without having all the specifics in front of me, we had the bid out, and the call to the equipment was left really open-ended. So there were opportunities in there where the items were, it was a lot of different flavors. And it was hard for us to be able to dictate which was what. You know, we wanted to make sure we're being responsible by, you know, getting the best quality for the price that we could. Or also by analyzing what we had would indeed work in the scope. And when they were spread out as they were, we thought, all right, this is, maybe we should redo it so that it is a uniform bid and it matches what we carry already in another venue in our operation.
Outside of that bit of information and the fact that it's Motorola, would there have been anything in this gentleman's specs that would have not served you at the same level that you were hoping?
I don't have any reason to say no, but I don't have the information handy right now either. I'm not, I'm not sure which company is which. We just looked at the data.
What is that? What is that, the Orpheum that's already Motorola that you wanted to stick with?
The radios.
Oh, so we already have Motorola radios at the Orpheum. So you were just wanting Motorola radios throughout then? Because you're familiar with that.
But a radio is, I'm sorry, but a radio is kind of a radio.
Well, but you probably have different charging systems, different.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to plug his into their charger. It's like a DeWalt drill in a Milwaukee. I'm not going to get to use the same battery, but it doesn't mean that when I want to drill a hole, that there's any difference in the quality of the hole is all I'm pointing out. And unless you have an occasion where you need to have, take some units from one place to the other, maybe you can make an argument there, but.
Which is what I, yeah.
I guess, and they probably have enough units at both places.
There's every, every possibility. Ours would talk to the Orpheum radio.
Yeah, you're all, you're all on the same frequencies and everything like that. I understand that.
Didn't have that opportunity to find out.
Mr. Kane, what's the name of your company again? Is it Tri-State?
Yes, Tri-State Communications.
Tri-State Communications, okay. And that's the Kenwood.
Correct.
And you were at $51,201.75. And you met all of the, I don't know if you've seen the list, but the digital site trunking system, the
Right, yeah.
35 portable radios, UHF portable radios, that kind of thing.
It was, it's a compatible, comparable product bid.
I'm going to move, we defer A and B. And you get us some sort of report and bring it back about his system and where, if there's any negatives, then let us know what it is. But I'm going to move, we defer this for two weeks to get a report. And I'll second it.
I guess that's good enough, yeah. Well, just probably an explanation of it. Because, yeah, I mean, I, look, I would, I agree with you. I would much rather spend the money locally if possible. But I also, to the mayor's point, I mean, if you're going to have two different drills or two different operating system, you aren't going to have a DeWalt at your house and a different type of drill at your office. You know what I mean?
I get it. I do get it.
So as much as we, as much as I sympathize with you and I'd rather keep the 50K here and pay our local workforce, I also don't want two different systems that are never going to be able to go to both. So, yeah, he'll get us a report and.
All right. Thank you for consideration. I appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks for coming today.
That defers it to November 2nd?
Yes.
Yes. We have to call the roll though.
Is the vote, okay.
Okay, I'm going to call that. We'll have to do two separate motions. So this is on 7A. Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
7B, can he take, he can take the same motions? I'll move it. I don't think you have to second.
Yep, second.
Make a motion to do them both, but let's just go your way today and.
Thank you.
If I have that right, but I'm not going to get the Roberts Rule of Book order out today. Let's just keep rolling.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. You spend too many hours in the legal department. I can see that, but we'll let it go today. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to ASI Sign Innovations for 31-way signing signs. D is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Gilling for buses for the transit system. A is approving total payments and fund transfers for September 2020. Niner applications for beer and liquor license. See the list, come forward if you have questions. Shaner, receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items?
Can vote electronically.
Vote electronically, please. Passes 5011, the hearing amendment to the HUD, year one action plan to allow for receipt of CBDG and ESG coronavirus funding. I'll move that. Second. Hearings open. Is anyone to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
12 is a hearing resolution accepting the proposal of Cal Ventures for land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal area. I'll move it.
Second.
Hearing is open. Anyone to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. You calling or are we voting? We're voting.
Vote electronically on this one. Mayor, do you want to hit your button again? Thank you.
Passes 5013, the hearing resolution determining an area the city be blighted in, the economic development area. Designating it as an urban renewal project and adopting amendment one to the amended restated Donner Park Urban Renewal Plan. I'll move that. Second. Anyone to be heard on that one? The hearing's open. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5014, the hearing resolution accepting the proposal of bad drill developer for property in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal area and authorizing development, minimum assessment, parking license agreement. Motion is requested to defer this item till November 2nd, 2020. I'll move that. Passes 50, citizen concerns, Tony Ostranowski. Come on up the microphone and tell us what you, what your issue is.
Okay, I'm not really sure if you guys can help me, but I'm hoping.
You pull the microphone down just a little. Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. We have been buying rental property and refixing them up and getting people into homes. And we're trying to buy the one on First Street in Sioux City. You guys just had a meeting last week about demolishing it. Well, we've tried to contact the person. I've went upstairs to the third floor and everything. How do you go about getting the information and phone numbers to contact those people?
We may not have the phone number, number one. We may not. But number two, wasn't First Street the one where that kid was here and he was going to redo First Street, wasn't he?
Well, it has changed hands. They had a fire in there. They redid the windows, redid the basement, and then they sold it to some company that's supposed to be in Anawa or Salix or something like that.
Yeah, that's that young kid. It's.
And his dad or something.
2600 block of West. Yeah, that's, that's Greg Hoffling's grandson. He was here the other night, and we deferred action on that, and he says he's working on it.
Okay. Well, because he hasn't, and I know the news come out and interviewed the neighbors, because my girlfriend lives right next door, and they've been having a lot of vandalism, and nobody has worked on the property for over two months.
Yeah, I don't think he can until we deferred the demolition for him the other night.
Right. And the kid was farming, he said, getting his crop in.
He's got a plan. He's, Darrell has his phone number. Darrell Bullock, if you get ahold of Darrell on the third floor, he can give you his number.
Okay, so get ahold of him. Yeah, because we're just trying to get property, fix it up, to get people in it instead of having them demolished.
There's one at 2105 South Cecilia that was a burned job you might want to look at.
Okay.
And the bank owns that, and the bank would gladly make a deal with you from what Darrell said. I don't know any of the facts.
Bob, Bob Patmore over here can get you Darrell's number.
Okay, yeah, well, we got him. We own a construction company, so we got, we got him on speed dial.
Get ahold of Darrell, because he knows, that's Greg Hoffling's grandson, and Greg was here with him, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any other citizen to be heard? Seeing none, Mr. Redkin?
No, sir, nothing. Thank you.
Julie?
I just want to say, I think it's awesome that we have citizens who are willing to pick up these houses and try to do something with them. Does nothing but help with our housing shortage, so I love that.
Alex?
One thing that I wanted to bring up, I don't have a lot, but I was just thinking of this. It was brought to my attention earlier. I talked with Parks and Rec, but I would just brainstorm with all of you. At Morningside on campus, we have a lot of, a lot of people, kids that come on campus after going to school, and they want to skateboard and go on all types of the property and stuff like that, or ride their bikes. And so it was brought to the attention that they were saying, look, we really need a skate park or some type of that in the Morningside area. And I don't know if we, if you guys think of any property we have or area. The one that Parks and Rec said that they have space, but don't know if it would be really conducive to this, was at South St. Aubin and Glen, that little corner. I mean, that's ours, but I didn't know, I didn't know if there was any other area that would be easy to do, like make, they make passive skate parks now where it's literally just like benches and different curbs that you can grind on and do that. I mean, it doesn't have to be extraordinary or extravagant. They just wanted a little something because the Morningside security, I mean, they're getting pretty hostile and have had to call the cops a few times and stuff, so.
These college students or kids?
No, kids. They get off, they get out of school and then they come to the school, or then they come to the college.
Okay.
So I just didn't know if, if anyone, if you guys have any ideas or something, let me know. But I've been talking to Parks and Rec, just try to pick their brain.
I'd agree with Matt that that open lot on the southeast corner of Glen and South St. Aubin, the traffic there is really heavy.
I agree. And there's not enough space, you know, I mean, I don't think that.
Pretty small.
They're trying to think of what they can do with that. They're open to whatever we want to do with it. But I agree, that I just didn't think it was the best spot for it. And then I was thinking behind the library up on Morningside, but I thought that would be an area, because then you have that parking lot right there where I think staff parks, and then there's some green space, maybe, but I don't know. So if you guys just think about that.
About $300,000 to build a good skate park though, too.
Well, and that's what I was wondering if it was less, you know, if there weren't like big structures, I don't know.
I think it was like.
And I don't know if they're.
I think it was like $290 for that one we did on the west side, and that's a long time ago now.
At Cook?
Because, because of a lot of lawyers in our world, your tolerance on one of those is so, you can't, you really have to make them, otherwise.
Low scale.
People like.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, is I don't even want ramps or, you know what I mean? Like you could have one vert ramp, like one little side, but then the rest of it could just be benches and stuff that you grind. I mean, they're, they can be much less, but.
They just want a space dedicated to them.
So that they have somewhere to be able to go, and not try to get all that way. I was trying to just think of where, where would be easily accessible, but. I, we don't, I mean, we don't know.
The whole Morningside area.
Yeah, they're just kids in the Morningside area that are looking for, looking for something to do. So if you guys can think of that or help me out with that.
Kids?
Huh? No, 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 like high school, middle, yeah, middle school, high school kids, yeah.
Middle school.
Did they ever do anything with Fairmount Park after they?
That one down, that one down the valley?
Yeah, where they, right behind where the old fire station was, at the.
Yeah, but that's really hard to get to, Pete. And the Waha boys, the last I knew, quit playing baseball. They were the last guys to use that. Brothers, they, they used to play the World Series there every week. But just, that's a tough park to get in at all. You didn't even see it, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll be Bob's project.
Yeah. No, I think that's all I needed to bring up today. The census did end, by the way. I'm sure you might have saw. The census did end, by the way, I'm sure you might have saw that on the fifteenth, so I think we did well in our community. I'd thank everyone for their efforts, and I know everyone on this council was very supportive